In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to Novo Coronavirus Executive Order 51 on March 12th, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This called meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the 25th day of May, 2021 without a quorum present in the city council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council Ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each city council member is participating from their home or other remote location, and I am in the city council chamber. Once again, good evening to all of my colleagues on council. And Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Madam City Manager, would you now proceed with your items?
City Manager is muted.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, tonight we welcome Kate Brand, President of Bond Secure's Maryview Hospital, and she will serve as the primary presenter. Mr. Tom Prevett, Director of Advocacy and Community Relations, and Bond Secure's Maryview Harborview Associates are also in attendance as they provide a Bond Secure's Maryview Medical Center update. Welcome again, and thank you for sharing your time with us this evening, Ms. Brand.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to join you this evening. I'm Kate Brand, the President of Bond Secure Maryview Medical Center and our Harborview Medical Campus. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you to provide you with an overview of our ministry, our market, Maryview Medical Center, and to highlight both how we've combated the pandemic and where it is we're heading in the future. I'm happy to answer any questions you have or take comments at the end. If you could go to Slide 2, please. In September 2018, Bond Secure merged with Mercy Health to become Bond Secure Mercy Health, one of the largest healthcare systems in the nation. Bond Secure hospitals have more negotiating power than we did pre-merger. For the Portsmouth area, this means that we can increase our quality of care, more effectively manage the cost of that care, and it gives us strength to continue our ministry for people who are poor, dying, and underserved. Here you see who we are in terms of our mission and our values. It is very similar to what our community was used to prior to September 2018. What made our merger such a natural fit with Mercy Health is that our two ministries were already so similar in our values and our emphasis on human dignity and compassion in our care delivery. Next slide, please. The health ministry's roots go back nearly 200 years to three brave groups of women religious who courageously came to this country from Europe to serve poor people who had little or no access to medical or nursing care. Their commitment to serve continues today all Bond Secure Mercy Health markets as they improve health access and outcomes for the entire community. Next slide, please. We are among the nation's 20 largest health systems and one of its five largest Catholic systems that is financially strong, well-positioned for growth, and highly respected, spanning seven states across the eastern half of the United States. We're also now an international health system after completing a merger with a health system in Ireland. Next slide, please. Our Bond Support local market includes three hospitals and numerous primary care practices, ambulatory care sites, and specialty physician practices to provide quality healthcare services to the residents of Hampton Roads. We also employ nearly 5,000 caregivers across the Hampton Roads region. Next slide, please. We have a dedicated local leadership team who you see in this slide and also behind me who share commitment to providing services that are important to our community. At Maryview, we welcome several new leaders to our senior leadership team to assist with that commission commitment, including myself. And just as an aside, I've been with Bond Support for 16 years. I began at Maryview in 2020, just as the pandemic was starting. Actually, my second week in this role was our first Incident Command for COVID. But I'm a Hampton Roads native, and so I'm honored to serve my home area, my hometown, and to lead Maryview into the future. Next slide, please. Maryview Medical Center is a community leader in high-quality compassionate care as you can see from this overview of our facilities, specialties, and service offerings, both at Maryview and Harborview. Beyond the walls of our hospitals, we have other access points and quality healthcare offerings for the Portsmouth community, including award-winning cardiac care, physical therapy, stroke, orthopedic, and behavioral healthcare, amongst other things. We are continuously recognized by independent third-party organizations for our safety, quality, and clinical outcomes. This includes being accredited by the American Cancer Society College of Surgeons, Commission on Cancer, as a comprehensive community cancer program, and being joint-commission certified as a primary stroke center and Anthem Blue Distinction Center for Hip and Knee Replacement and Bariatric Surgery. We're also a top-five hospital in Virginia for lowest readmission rate and multiple diagnoses. We were named a Virginia Living Magazine Top 50 Hospital. We received the Get With The Guidelines Stroke Gold Plus, Target Stroke Honor Roll, and Target Diabetes Honor Roll for 2021, and were spotlighted by U.S. News &amp; World Report as part of their 2020-2021 Best Hospitals List for Heart Failure and COPD or Chronic Obstructive Pulmonary Disease. Next slide, please. One recent recognition I'd like to draw attention to is our Chest Pain Center accreditation with PCI from the American College of Cardiology. This recognition was achieved by our demonstrated expertise and commitment in treating patients with chest pain. PCI, or Percutaneous Coronary Intervention, is also known as coronary angioplasty. It is a non-surgical procedure that opens narrowed or blocked coronary arteries with a balloon to receive symptoms of heart disease or reduce heart damage during or after a heart attack. Chest pain accreditation requires the dedication of all members of the hospital team, including our EMS partners, for whom we are very thankful, to provide safe and timely patient care. We just received this designation a couple weeks ago, and I think it's a testament to the fact that while we were treating COVID, while we were managing through that pandemic, we will also continue in our focus in other areas as demonstrated through our achievement of this accreditation. Next slide, please. Another recent recognition I'm quite proud of is our rating from CMS. CMS launched its Star Rating Program in 2016, and this year CMS changed its methods of rating by assigning stars based on 48 measures and categories of mortality, safety of care, readmission, patient experience, and timely and effective care. I'm proud of the three stars that we've received as it was an improvement of two stars, which frankly is very difficult to do. Over 50% of hospitals this year received the same rating they had before, while 45% moved up or down by one star. Only 5% of hospitals shifted up or down by two stars, and we are in that group as a testament to the hard work by our team to continually improve our quality of care and our patient experience. We're also going after that fourth and that fifth star. That's really important to us, and we're going to continue that work as well. Next slide, please. The last quality recognition I'd like to highlight was just announced a few weeks ago. The Leapfrog Group is an independent national watchdog organization committed to healthcare quality and safety. Every six months, Leapfrog publishes its ratings on more than 2,600 hospitals across the nation, and they base that rating on the 28 measures that you see here. Next slide, please. Maryview was awarded an A. In the spring of 2021, our second consecutive A in the Leapfrog Safety Grade, a national distinction which recognizes our achievements in providing safer care. Leapfrog assigns its grades based on performance in preventing medical errors, injuries, accidents, infections, and other harms to patients and their care. So receiving the highest grade possible is really a testament to our amazing physicians, in fact, advanced practitioners, nurses, and all of our associates. Next slide, please. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about where we are and where we're going, but that's not possible without first addressing where we've been. This past year has provided the biggest challenge that any of us in healthcare have encountered and hopefully ever will encounter in our careers. It's required us to look at every aspect of our service. At the beginning of the pandemic, we launched Incident Command Center, and for the safety of patients, staff, and you, we reduced entry points to our facilities and restricted hours and numbers allowed for visitation. Because the pandemic is still with us, we continue our Incident Command on an ad hoc basis from the facility and in the market as a weekly basis to ensure that we're staying on top of things. We briefly paused elective surgeries at the start of the pandemic to adhere to the governor's orders. However, for much of the pandemic, we continued normal operations to the extent possible while always keeping the safety of our patients, staff, and visitors as top priority. To date, we've treated nearly 1,700 COVID patients in our emergency rooms and more than 760 COVID patients admitted to Maryview. Next slide, please. As businesses have forever changed, this is certainly true of healthcare. If one positive has come from the adversity of COVID, it's the many innovations that have been introduced or enhanced by necessity. We had virtual care options available prior to the pandemic, but the expansion, growth, and use of these options greatly increased last year, and we believe the utilization of virtual care options is something that will continue as patients adopted these new methods and recognized their many advantages. Across our ministry, we've conducted more than 1 million virtual visits since April of last year. During 2020, we introduced some rapid COVID testing, our BioFire Respiratory Panel, and have additional testing capabilities coming online in the very near future. We partnered with the Portsmouth Health Department to provide COVID-19 screenings to 1,000 Portsmouth residents in August of 2020, and in January of this year, we provided Portsmouth Health Department with 1,500 doses of COVID-19 vaccine to support community vaccination efforts, and also offered our Market COVID Vaccine Clinic Playbook and some staffing resources to assist in vaccine efforts. It's been a long year, but hope is on the horizon. As our community vaccination rates continue to rise and social and public restrictions begin to loosen, it is now possible to see the light at the end of the tunnel. We're not there yet, but we know we'll get there together. Next slide, please. On April 1st, we successfully completed the consolidation of services from DePaul Medical Center to Maryview Medical Center as first announced in January. While not an easy decision, it was a necessary one made with much discernment, and it will strengthen our services here at Maryview. The consolidation of ambulatory services into the Maryview portfolio enhances existing collaborative services such as outpatient infusion centers, radiation oncology, and women's imaging. Our medical practice hub-and-spoke service model has been further enhanced with additional convenient access points for pre-post-procedure care, with the procedural portion of the care being done at Maryview. We were able to realign valuable medical equipment to best support the needs of our population in the Western Hampton Roads region, which includes adding a second DaVinci robot for minimally invasive surgery, and also some additional physiologic monitoring capability to help manage our increasing acuity critical care population. Outpatient, ambulatory, physician, and community health services remain on the DePaul campus and in the Greater Norfolk region. Next slide, please. We've continued to see a lot of growth over the past year despite the challenges of the pandemic. And our cardiovascular service area construction is underway on a hybrid operating room, and in July, we'll welcome our new structural heart cardiologist to our team. We've seen programmatic growth in cardiothoracic surgery thanks in part to the addition of Dr. Wohler in February of last year. We launched our EQUA program in 2020. It's a complementary service to our cardiothoracic program, and we've expanded our thoracic surgery program, which also supports our cancer services. We've seen physician network alignment beneficial to our area and our patients by providing access to expertise of physicians at South Hampton, Memorial Medical Center, and Mary Immaculate Hospital, as well as independent providers with whom we affiliate. We continue to look at opportunities to strengthen our network in the coming year. We've realigned some diagnostic testing studies by moving them from the hospital outpatient department setting to a practice-based setting for improved low-cost, high-quality service delivery, which is in line with the AAA of healthcare. We also continue to recruit for key services within the market. In oncology, we've continued our focus around medical oncology in Western Hampton Roads. We've enhanced our comprehensive breast program with the addition of Dr. Stephanie Repole, fellowship-trained breast surgeon. Even through the pandemic, we've been able to support the importance of early detection with breast, prostate, and lung screenings. We also continue to provide low-dose CT program for lung cancer and are currently recruiting a surgical oncologist to further complement that service. In surgery, we successfully transitioned our bariatric surgical program to Maryview in March of last year with the most experienced surgeon in Hampton Roads. Our DaVinci robot has allowed us to provide more minimally invasive options for gynecologic, urologic, and general surgery, where these procedures have less pain, bleeding, and infection risk, enabling shorter hospital stays and faster recovery times. The urology procedures that you see listed here are supported by a dedicated and experienced urology team that provides smooth and efficient pre- and post-op patient experience. And one of our urologists has shared with us that we have the most advanced stone surgery equipment, technology, and staff in the region. We offer advanced polarectal surgical procedures which utilize minimally invasive options, including the ability to avoid a permanent colostomy should a patient require a removal of a portion of their colon. In orthopedics, we maintain a comprehensive orthopedic and spine surgical program which includes physiatry and sports medicine as we continue to increase patient access points across the region. Next slide, please. Despite COVID, we continue to invest in Maryview and did a lot of investment last year. There's a lot of details here, but it was more than $14 million that were approved for capital projects. This investment continues in 2021 with a cystoscopy room upgrade, an emergency department refresh, additional physiologic monitoring capabilities, and building infrastructure projects. Next slide, please. Highlighting just a few of the projects we completed in 2020, here is our beautiful new lobby that welcomes visitors to our facility. Our lobby opened in September. We hoped to be able to do a big open house, but as you all know, due to COVID, we've been limited in how we can showcase our new facility. But if any of you are interested, I would be delighted to host you on a tour at any time. Next slide, please. Last summer, we also unveiled a new dedicated surgical unit for elective orthopedic and bariatric patients. Each patient has a private room and bathroom, as do all of our inpatient rooms, with a nursing staff that is dedicated and trained for post-operative care for the patient. We also have dedicated orthopedic and bariatric coordinators to support exceptional patient care. Next slide, please. At Bond Support, we focus on the whole person, and we focus on building healthy communities. Our ministry calls us to have a deep commitment to our core values of human dignity, integrity, compassion, stewardship, and service. We recognize that factors that drive individual and community health extend well beyond the walls of our hospitals. As a health system, we provide more than $2 million a day in community benefit. That community benefit is as strong as ever right here in Western Hampton Roads as seen through our many programs and initiatives. Our Hampton Roads Good Health Accountable Care Organization, or ACO, created $11.3 million in total savings for the Medicare population in 2019, representing a reduced healthcare spend to all taxpayers. Community services provided include our Caravan, which is a free medical service providing general medical care to uninsured adults and children in Hampton Roads communities. We offer life coach services, particularly for frequent utilizers of our emergency department. We have a longstanding partnership with Project Search, which thus far in 2021 has provided six students with workforce skills. We also offer health profession education and support with court services for behavioral health patients. Additionally, last year, Maryview Medical Center administered 500 Blue Shots Drive Through Blue Shots in Portsmouth and 727 at Harborview. We supported the Portsmouth Health Department's 2020 Community Walkability Grant through walking tours of various Portsmouth communities to determine challenges and walkability, infrastructure, et cetera, and planning is underway to develop a prescriptive nutrition program partnership with EDMS and the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and Eastern Shore to ensure access to healthy foods for patients upon discharge. Next slide, please. Maryview Medical Center has a deep history with the city of Portsmouth. We've been serving its community since 1945 and have expanded in many ways since then. We are proud of our community partnerships and are excited about the work being done at our Bond Support Community Health Center in Craddock. Maryview Medical Center conducts regular community health needs assessments, and the Community Health Center is a result of one of those assessments. We received $85,000 in funding from internal and external sources to develop a community center to address the community's health and social disparities based on our prioritized needs identified in our community health needs assessment. This center is located in the Craddock area of Portsmouth and will serve as a centralized hub for Bond Support community health operations, including our Caravan and our community health associates. This center will strengthen our partnerships with local government, community stakeholders, and organizations to provide education and resources to the public. Our initial area of focus at our community health center will be to address access to health and wellness, economic development and stability, and community engagement. During the pandemic, we also administered more than 1,500 COVID-19 vaccinations from this site. We've also been engaged with the Craddock community through both neighborhood cleanup events and community garden revitalization efforts. Another partnership that we have that we're very proud of is our partnership with West Haven School, which has included school supplies drives as well as welcome backs for teachers and students. We look forward to continuing this partnership into the future. Next slide, please. Finally, I'll leave you with a peek into the near future with this artistic rendering of our Harborview Hospital. Initially, we received approval for a surgically-focused 18-bed hospital, but based on the needs of our community, we submitted a more robust plan and are going through the Certificate of Public Need process for a 54-bed hospital utilizing ORs and inpatient beds from the DePaul inventory. We hope that you'll join us and follow along as we move forward with project plans. Next slide, please. It's been an interesting year in healthcare. We have weathered the COVID-19 storm together, and there were many reasons to be optimistic. We are proud to be citizens of Portsmouth and look forward to continuing our working together with you, our city council members, to ensure that everyone in Portsmouth can receive quality, affordable healthcare. Thank you again for having me and my leadership team. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
And thank you, Ms. Brand, for coming and being available today. And we do have a question from my council colleague, Councilman Paul Bapp.
Yes, ma'am. How many beds do we have at Maryview? And did I hear you say you're gonna add 54 more beds?
We are licensed for 267 acute care inpatient beds at Maryview. Our average daily census is of around 130 patients. We are adding or propose to add 54 beds to our Harborview campus in Suffolk. That will not reduce the licensed bed capacity here at Maryview. Maryview will continue to have 267 beds. The beds that will be transitioned to the Harborview area will come from the DePaul hospital because we want to make sure that we're maintaining a strong presence in both communities. Said differently, there will not be a diminishment of service offered at Maryview.
Flashmere Barnes, sir, you have the floor?
Just one quick question. Do you guys have a relationship or partnership with Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority? And if so, what does that look like?
We do. Brett Sierra, who leads our community health team, is involved with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. I'm unfortunately not prepared to speak to what the specifics of that entail, but I would happily provide some follow-up. I can pull Brett into the conversation. So Brett Sierra, again, leads community health. He's actually based at our community health center in Craddock. We relocated him and that team to that building. So we're excited about not just the work that he's been doing, but opportunities to really expand that work in the future.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Katie, for the presentation. Quite impressive. But in my reading, in my writing, in my listening, I didn't hear anything about the baby delivery, baby well-care. I know that that was stopped about a year ago. So how are women who are birthing having, you know, where are they going for those services?
That decision was effective in 2019. Prior to me coming into this role, it was really based on the maternity needs of the community and insufficient demand. At that time, about 88% of the patients in our primary service area that were delivering babies were delivering them outside of the city of Portsmouth. I believe most of those deliveries are occurring at Chesapeake Regional or in Norfolk, based on, I think, where the practices that support those deliveries are based. It's, you know, it's certainly an area of service that we continue to look at in the future as we do demand projections, you know, for this community, for Suffolk and beyond. And we continue to look for opportunities to partner with physicians in the community as well.
Okay, and I guess just out of curiosity question, I mean, so there are no baby births that are saying born in Portsmouth?
Not at Maryview. There, I think there are Portsmouth Naval. Of course, that's a different situation, but there are not any at Maryview Medical Center.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Brand. I have a question in regards to some of the disparities that we're seeing across race in regards to working in the healthcare area. Has Bond Secure entered into any partnerships with our schools to provide internships in the area of healthcare as well as healthcare administration?
We do have affiliations with a number of, you know, not high schools. I think it's more at the collegiate level. We have a number of partnerships with community college and other institutions, both in this area and outside. We offer rotations for clinical students to come through, nursing, radiology, tech, physicians. We do have a partnership with Eastern Virginia Medical School and have a residency program that rotates through Maryview so that we're able to offer educational training for soon-to-be physicians. That partnership is done through Portsmouth Family Medicine, which offices a primary care practice in Portsmouth, and then those residents come through. And it's a very diverse group of students that come through that program and other programs. We have been talking about, as we predict the future, we don't think that we have enough people in the future pipeline to support the needs of the healthcare workforce of the future. And so we're actually working with our health system team and doing some specific focused workforce development. And one of the ideas that has come up is looking at are there some additional opportunities to partner with local high schools as well as colleges to help support educational training and career development pipelines? And so I think that I would welcome the conversation to see how we could partner more closely with Portsmouth schools to be able to offer that.
Yeah, yeah. Years ago, there was a relationship that Maryview had. It was a nursing program, Candy Strippers, I believe that was the name of it. However, I think that that would be an excellent opportunity as we look at trying to correct some of these disparities that we see. So definitely we'll follow up. Can you leave us your contact information or direct line where we can call so that we can start putting this discussion into place?
Yeah, I will share that with clerk after the...
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues on council?
A little like Councilman...
Mr. Moody, Councilmember Moody, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you not see the lights that we put up there? You're on mute, Mayor. Katie, thank you for the presentation, very detailed. I was glad to see the A ratings, but I would bet that the perception on the street from John and Jay Doe, Jane Doe, would be lower than that. So my point is, what are we doing from, or what are you doing from a PR perspective to share those ratings with the general public, particularly the residents of Portsmouth?
I think that's a great, a great question. We often talk internally. We don't tell our story enough. And there are amazing things that happen in this facility every single day and in our affiliated practices, and we don't tell that story enough. So that is a continuing conversation that we are having and have had with leadership. Our organizational philosophy around marketing is a little bit different than maybe some of the other health systems in town, and frankly, that's not doing us any favors. And so I think this forum is an opportunity, just for me as a new leader here, to begin to cultivate different relationships with the leaders of this city, both formal and informal, to have forum and opportunity to do a couple things. One, to tell our story. Two, to understand where are there gaps? Where are we not meeting need or expectation? And how can we work together to improve those? And three, I'm a member of this community and want to be involved. And so I think it's a great opportunity. I came into this role in March of last year and had big plans for what that was gonna look like. And COVID, like many of you, changed a lot of those plans. And so now we're in a new year and are beginning to get back on track with some of the work that we know that we need to do to be a strong provider of healthcare partner in the city of Portsmouth and in the community beyond.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the...
Hey, how you doing, Ms. Katie? Great presentation as well. I got a question. Is, being that you guys have done this merger, have you guys been working on a trauma, a trauma unit with the Bond Secure company?
We have not at this time. You know, I think there's a challenge with, when you look as the crow flies and then you look as the car drives, there's a little bit of a difference there, right? And so Norfolk General is a Level 1 designated trauma center, which on paper is, you know, merely a few miles away from Maryview. I think the reality is, as we all have experienced, it takes a little longer than... it takes a little longer than five minutes most days to get from point A to point B, especially if there's a bridge lift or some traffic at the tunnel. So we are continuing to evaluate what services need to be offered. We do see ourselves as a tertiary capability. Even though we don't do trauma, we have a very robust cardiothoracic surgical program, have a great cardiac surgeon. We have orthopedic surgeons that can treat fractures. We have, you know, vascular surgery, neurology, general surgery. So we do have all of the core specialties. We do not have trauma surgeons. And so there are some injuries that are, you know, too significant for us to handle, but have good partnerships with EMS and our, and our regional facilities so that we are able to stabilize and transfer facility, transfer patients to the appropriate level of care.
And I got one more question. I, I know we opening up and COVID is subsiding somewhat, but we still want to make sure we on our guard. Is there any future plans for your caravan? Will that be something that'd be going into the community administering vaccine shots? If, if there is a second wave or a potential threat that will be coming in the future?
I, I think that there is. I'm not aware of specific plans, and so don't want to misspeak, but I think as we have more access to a single-dose vaccine, that increases our ability to be able to get out more in the community and offer that. I think it's a little bit more challenging with two doses because the logistics, as you all know, to coordinate dose one and dose two. But we are beginning to offer single-dose vaccine to higher-risk patients in the hospital so that as they're discharged, they're being discharged vaccinated if they've not yet received the vaccine. And our plan is to continue to expand that effort to all of the patients that we serve.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues on council? Hearing none. Ms. Bren, I just want to take a moment to thank you and Mr. Privet for your commitment to providing healthcare, quality healthcare in the city of Portsmouth. I know during this pandemic, we had a conversation, and you all stepped to the plate to assist our health department in providing vaccines and other support services. And, and you did it with a smile on your face. And we're, we're glad that your partners here with us in the city of Portsmouth. To Dr. Whitaker's point, certainly, we would like to see more outreach within the community because healthcare is important. And as you all are aware, we have a number of healthcare challenges in our communities, such as diabetes and some of the cancers. And so it's important that we all fully engage with the community to produce better outcomes for the community at large. And we're grateful to have you. And once again, on behalf of the council, thank you for your service to Portsmouth.
Thank you very much. We are called to serve and are proud to be your partners. Thank you.
Madam City Manager, you may proceed, please.
Thank you. The next item on the work session agenda is collective bargaining. Prior to introducing the collective bargaining presentation, I am going to make some clarifying remarks regarding the actions the prior council took on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty regarding this topic. During that meeting, the city council directed the city attorney and city manager to convene a work group consisting of subject matter experts from legal, human resources, and labor to develop collective bargaining procedures for local public sector employees in Portsmouth. That action is not binding on the current council. And while city councils are always allowed to express their opinions on a matter, as the prior council did through its resolution, the Virginia Code provides that collective bargaining can only be authorized by council action taken after May first, two thousand and twenty-one. Further, as city manager, I want to emphasize my commitment to competitive wages for all employees. I support a collaborative and integrated approach between employees and city leadership. In my role, it is my responsibility to be a good fiscal steward of the city's financial resources while ensuring sustainability of priority city services. At this time, Derek Challenger, Assistant City Attorney, will present the city's current status regarding collective bargaining. Derek?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. I'll be doing my presentation on local public employee collective bargaining. Can we go to the next slide, please? First, what is collective bargaining? In two thousand and twenty, the Virginia Assembly passed a law permitting local government to pass ordinances or resolutions allowing public sector collective bargaining. The law permits local governing bodies to legally recognize and bargain with a labor union or other employee associations as the exclusive bargaining agent of their employees. Unionized employees will be able to collectively bargain and enter a collective bargaining agreement with respect to any matter of their employment by ordinance or resolution. Next slide. What are the options? Collective bargaining can be declined by council by passing an ordinance or resolution to continue operations and no further action will be required. Or collective bargaining can be approved by council, and the city manager will begin effort to organize a work group of subject matter experts to identify cost reductions and develop policies or procedures. Next slide. The September two thousand and twenty resolution, previous city council requested that city staff review the laws surrounding collective bargaining. A work group was created to consider collective bargaining and to report back to council. Next slide. Important dates. The new law effective date was May first, two thousand and twenty-one. The city received a petition signed by Public Safety Fire Representative the union on May first, two thousand and twenty-one, addressed to the city manager. The timeframe of receiving certification for majority of public employees in a unit is a hundred and twenty days. Thus, the deadline for council response to collective bargaining determination is August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Next slide. Who can participate? All city employees. Unionization required to participate. No elected officials, constitutional officers, or their employees can participate in collective bargaining. Next slide. Is striking permitted? No. Any local government employee who engages in a strike may be terminated from employment and banned from reemployment by the Commonwealth or any Virginia public body for a year. Next slide. What are the budgetary impacts? The preliminary associated costs include salaries and benefits of represented employees, salary and benefits of administrator, salary and benefits of designated staff. We estimate there would be three to four new employees to help administer collective bargaining. Compensation for contractual services, including legal. The preliminary estimate range is one to two million dollars annually. Next slide. What is the purpose of public collective bargaining? To be an advocate for the represented employees, to advocate for increased wages and benefits for represented employees, be an advocate for employment terms and conditions, and advocate for represented employee work conditions. Next slide. The city's current position? Establishing class and compensation study, maintaining competitive wages for all employees, improving and maintaining employee work conditions, developing coherent strategies surrounding diversity, equity, and inclusion. Next slide. Next steps. It's to determine city's short and long-term financial impact, determine organizational structure compared to adjoining localities, and then ultimately to decline or approve. Next slide. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Challenger. It looks like Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Attorney Challenger, for the presentation. And I know we approved the resolution with the last council, and I thought that a work group was already established. I think it says in slide three that a work group will be established. So if they've already established, what, what was the outcome? And I mean, are we still looking for some formulas or some, some amounts or some gauges? What is the status of the work that has been done by the work group?
There was a work group that was created. The work group consisted of three individuals from Human Resources, City Attorney's Office, and Local 539. We met a total of five times, starting in November of two thousand and twenty, and continued until, I believe, March or April of two thousand and twenty-one. The composition of that particular work group is consisted of Human Resources and the City Attorney's Office. The impact of that particular work group did not include the financial considerations that were listed in the slide on financial implications. So that's one of the purposes of an additional work group is to identify all of the costs associated with collective bargaining. The other thing that needs to be done with respect to the work group is to be able to continue to compare what's going on in other jurisdictions. As of today, the only jurisdiction in the state of Virginia that has allowed collective bargaining is Alexandria, Virginia. There is no jurisdiction in Hampton Roads that has approved it. There are very little jurisdictions that have even discussed collective bargaining at this point. So at this point, throughout the state of Virginia, we need to continue to study what other jurisdictions are going to be doing as relates to this.
Okay, so that's the purpose of the additional work group. And one additional question, I guess, on slide six, it mentioned about union is required or not required. I'm working with the Mid-Atlantic Pipe Trade, and I think someone mentioned to me that being involved in a union is not required. So I guess that was just a conflict. Is it required or is it not for the city employees?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
On, on slide six, I'm looking at it on my phone. It says that union is required, is a requirement. And I thought that it was not. Unionization is required to participate. So employee, city employees would have to join a union in order to participate if, if there was to be an option.
I, I, I think the way it should be stated is the converse of that. This law is really addressed to the municipality. It, it allows the municipality to recognize bargaining units and to be able to negotiate with them as the exclusive representative, representative of those groups of individuals. As of now, we're only able, we only negotiate with individuals. This will allow, if that was to happen, it would be allowing union to be the exclusive representative of a group of employees. So I think that's the way it should be stated.
Okay. And then my last question, I see the deadline for council response is August twenty-ninth. So if we make a decision or don't make a decision by then, where, where are we by August twenty-ninth?
By August twenty-ninth, we, we need to make a decision, yes or no, to allow collective bargaining or not to allow collective bargaining. And that has to occur by that date.
Okay, and will that give time for the additional work group to provide those additional figures that the finance department didn't get to weigh in in the first work group?
Potentially. Unfortunately, a lot of other jurisdictions, they haven't had groups come forward, requesting certification. So some of our sister cities haven't even received a certification yet. We received it from the fire department or fire employees. So, so in order to be able to compare all of the costs associated with it, it's helpful to, to, to look at other jurisdictions. So that's one of the, the problems that we have is we don't have all of the information as it relates to comparable situations and to be able to establish the best practice. It's the only jurisdiction we can look at is Alexandria. And Alexandria's situation is completely different. Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Attorney Challenger, have we looked outside of Virginia for other collective bargaining models?
Yes. I'm a member of the Local Government Attorneys of Virginia, and we were fortunate enough to have students from UVA's Public Interest Law Practice, Law Clinic. They, they researched jurisdictions throughout the country that had the same type of legislation as was allowed in Virginia. So we had an opportunity to look at those other places and kind of look at their ordinances and compare it. So I have in my possession all of the different legislation from different states that is similar to what the legislation we have now. So yes, I do have other examples from other states.
Okay, so you're going to be getting back with us with more specific cost information in addition to just what was presented this evening? Will that be at the next meeting?
I, I'm not sure of the scheduling of when the next meeting will be held, but that is correct. I will be continuing to update the financial information as it becomes available, obviously with the assistance of the Chief Financial Officer, as well as the City Manager's office. Will we continue to update the information so that we can bring it back? And we have to bring it back before August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Right, because, you know, really, the issue is really beyond just the cost. It's really a fundamental issue of will we allow employees to unionize? I think that's, that's at the crust of it. And I think when council really addresses that issue, then the other issue as far as the cost, that becomes whether that's something that council incur. But I think at the heart of it is, do we believe that employees have a right? Well, not a right, but do we believe that they should unionize and we should recognize it? And so I, I, I think that's really at, at the heart. So it really doesn't matter what other jurisdictions are doing. It's a matter of what this particular council where it stands on recognizing unions. Also, so if fifty percent of a particular work group decides they want to unionize, we don't have to recognize that?
We, we do not have to recognize that particular situation unless the city council agrees to allow collective bargaining. But yes, if we do allow collective bargaining, fifty percent of a particular bargaining unit could be the bargaining unit that the city is required to negotiate with. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'm definitely interested in hearing more information in regards to it.
Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor.
So we're saying that we, uh, the General Assembly and the City Council have allowed one department i- in this city to do collective bargaining. And the rest of the citizens are on their own.
No, um, the way the statute is written, it allows, if on May the first twenty twenty one, if we didn't already have a resolutio nal ordinance allowing collective bargaining, it allows any, uh, group to petition the city for collective bargaining. It just so happened, it was the employees of the fire department who was the group who initiated. But the, the way the statute is written, it allows any group, as long as they have a majority of those in that particular unit, to petition the city. So it still happened to be the, the fire department, but it could have been any unit.
So, so you're saying that the fire department is the prime element in wanting collective bargaining? And each department has the right to form the, the same kind of, uh, situation for themselves.
The, the, the way it would work i- in, 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 in practice is slightly different than that. Uh, after, uh, in this situation, the, the, the fire department initiates it. Let's say before August the twenty ninth, the city council agreed to allow collective bargaining. Then the next step would be actually sitting down and coming up with a, an agreement that defined bargaining units. And so that might mean the fire department, uh, police and city employees. That is a potential example of how bargaining units could be set up. And at that point, the, the, it, the three groups that the city would be negotiating with would be fire, police, and city employees. So part of the process of after a decision is made on collective bargaining, if, if the decision to go to help collective bargaining is to define bargaining units. And that's one of the first steps that is done when you try to create a collective bargaining agreement.
So it's every man for themselves, basically, when you're dealing with the units. S- see, what, what I'm, what I'm saying is we want to treat all our employees the same. And we are a well put together cohesive unit. And this situation, uh, kind of pulls us apart ru- rather than we dealing with all of the, the employees on the same basis. Uh, I, I've, I know about the fire department and this department want it, want to be treated differently and have a, um, greater portion, um, when we do our budget. But I, I think that kind of tears apart as a city. And, and we need, in this day and time, we need to kind of be together. And whatever we do for any of them, we try to do for all of them. So although it's, 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 it's okay. Say, for instance, the police department have collective bargaining. Really, I, I get confused with the point because if we decide to give everybody else three percent and the police department wants more, wanted to be t- treated on a different basis than the rest of the employees. That's not something that, that I'm comfortable with. Um, even in the negotiations, I would only come up with the same, um, derivative, which is three percent. So really, I think this collective bargaining can take up a lot of time. And I, I really don't s- see the meaning. We can make things better in the workplace and things like that, but we're gonna do it for all of them, aren't we? We, we're not just gonna isolate this group or that group. And I, I'm in tune to the whole city and not preferential treatment for this one or for that one because it scatters us. It doesn't bring us together. But if everybody got two percent or three percent, they all would feel the same euphoria and appreciation. So even though the collective bargaining exists, and it's, it's good thing, it, it, the, it's good, but we have to be careful with it that it doesn't take us out of the, uh, zone of, uh, having everybody together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is that, uh, you know, let's say the council, uh, gives the blessing, uh, uh, for the employees to unionize. Uh, step us through the process after that, uh, 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 does the NR, uh, NLRB uh, conduct the, uh, uh, the election within, uh, the employee groups to decide whether the employees indeed want to unionize? Is that part of the process?
We're not quite at that stage yet.
I know we're not at that stage, but st- let, let's say we are at that stage. Can you step us through the process? On what happens after council, uh, let's say, uh, it takes positive action. Council gives the green light. Step us through the process.
I will. Uh, the, the next step would be to have the, uh, work groups that, uh, discusses the financial costs as well as what other jurisdictions are doing. If, and after we, we, we do that and, and city council says, that's fine, we're good, we want to go for it. Then the next step is determining who the bargaining units are. So if it's in my example, police, fire, and city employees. Then the, the next step is determining whether or not there is a union that is going to come forward as relates to those groups. We've already heard from the fire. Um, and it, the National Labor Relations Board is not involved as the way the statute is written in Virginia. Um, when, when our work group created a ordinance, we use a labor relations officer. And, and that particular person came from, uh, the American Arbitrations Association. Um, and there's another organization that the federal employees, uh, but they, they, they create, uh, mediators and arbitrators for these types of issues. So that, so that would be that. And then the other thing is it doesn't necessarily always require an election. It could be that the, uh, employees have a majority of uh, folks who, uh, sign up. And there's no question about that they have a majority of those particular people in that particular bargaining unit. Uh, but any type of disputes, that would be probably handled from either a labor relations administrator or a labor relations council. And so, and there's advantages and disadvantages for both. The, uh, labor relations administrator would be one person probably, um, appointed by city council and would answer to city council. Um, as opposed to a, uh, a council, uh, a labor relations council that would be three people, five people, who be tasked to deal with all types of issues, whether you're talking about elections, whether there's an impasse, um, so forth and so on. But the, the, the next big step, if this, if council decides to allow collective bargaining, is to create a labor, uh, a collective bargaining agreement. That would be the next step. And generally, uh, for everything that I've seen, you need to allow roughly a year to come up with a collective bargaining agreement. And typically, collective bargaining agreements last for three years, two years, two or three years. That's the general timeframe. And then y- y- and consequently, that is, that, that's only the process.
Now, uh, okay, I'm still unclear. Uh, where do the employees weigh in on this? Uh, okay, where, where the city is management. Uh, okay, so, uh, the, the folks representing the employees have to come to management and say, okay, here's a list, uh, of employees within our department. And over fifty percent want to do, uh, co- collective bargaining. And here, here's, we, we need to sit down and wo- work out an agreement. Now, from that point, do the employees have to ratify that ag- agreement? Or is there some committee, uh, wi- within the employee group that does that? I, i- and the reason why I say that, I, I'm somewhat familiar with national unions and, and agreements have to be ratified in national unions by the, by the body, body of employees. So i- is that similar to this situation?
It, it could be that way, but the Virginia statute is very silent on a lot of the key terms that govern this particular issue. So consequently, at the part of the Local Government Attorney's Labor Relations Group that was just formed, these are the issues that we're trying to address and come to agreement with. Because this, the Virginia statute doesn't allow, doesn't provide a lot of guidance. So it's the poten- it's possible that what you're saying is correct. But I don't want to say definitively that's how it's going to be when I don't think anyone in, in Virginia, uh, who's handling these issues are really comfortable with how it's going to play out. And I think that's one of the reasons why, um, a lot of jurisdictions haven't addressed it yet. It's because everybody's waiting for someone else to do it. And, and the only example we have now with, with Alexandria, we have that sample, and even Alexandria is not a hundred percent comfortable or confident as to all of the next steps for it because we're not, there's no court cases that have been decided as relates to this. There's been, there's some people who are looking for the eternal Attorney General's office to step in and provide some clarification on some of these things. I, I think in order to, to get any of that type of, uh, definitive answers, um, I think we need to wait to see how it plays out because I don't think it's possible to, to, to provide those type of answers because we're not really sure.
Okay, thanks.
City Manager Jones?
Yes, at this point, I would just like to offer a recommendation, considering that there are a number of factors that we need to address, that we allow staff to go reconvene a work group that's representative of all employee groups and come back with, um, some next steps as to how we move forward and try to, uh, meet the deadline that we have before us.
Our colleagues, colleagues in council, are we okay with that, that, that process moving forward? Uh, can we get a consensus, a show of hands, please, on, on that, if we agree with that process? Madam City Manager, you, you have a consensus to move forward, and thank you for your.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I did have another question, um, from Mr. Challenger, this Attorney Challenger. I'm, I'm, uh, curious. So in, in this process as established by the, um, Virginia statute, where does the buck stop as far as who makes the final decision?
The final decision is made by city council.
Oh, I, I mean, as far, I, I should have, I should have clarified that more. As far as if there's a dispute, um, who would be the final, uh, decision maker?
When, when I created, or when our work group created the sample ordinance that we created, it was a labor relations administrator. And the labor relations administrator would be appointed by city council and would answer to city council. That would be the person who would make any type of decisions about any type of disputes.
Okay, so now, in the models that are outside of Virginia, have you seen any models that have a labor relations administrator that is foregoing the National Labor Relations Board making a decision?
Yes, um, pretty much all of the local collective bargaining that I've seen, there's either a labor relations administrator or there's the labor relations council. And the, and all, and both are created by city council.
Okay, and, um, and so have those withstood? Do you know if they have been challenged in court in those particular jurisdictions as far as foregoing the National Labor Relations Board?
I, I've not seen the net, no, they have not been challenged. And I, I don't believe the Na- National Labor Relations Board even ha- even has authority to address. I, I think that, that's the reason why you, you only see labor relations administrators or some council that is set up by city council to address those particular issues. And, and obviously, one of the biggest issues between a labor relations administrator versus a council, A, is cost, because you're talking about one person versus three. Um, and just the question as to whether or not you have, um, too many issues to, to have one labor relations administrator. And some jurisdictions I've seen, they've had multiple labor relations administrators that some of the times are even assigned to different bargaining units. It depends on how, how big the municipality is. And again, that's another reason why it's so important to, uh, continue to get information so we can compare what's best for Portsmouth as opposed to what's best for a large jurisdiction that may not necessarily fit Portsmouth.
Okay, and the, and, um, this labor relations administrative council, are they typically attorneys part of, um, City Attorney's Office, or is that just a separate entity of itself?
It, it's a separate entity of itself, it's completely independent of the City Attorney's Office or any other department of the city. They are appointed by city council.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor.
So these representatives, uh, are they just doing this from the goodness of their heart? And as a citizen, are they being paid? And if so, who pays them?
The, they're, they're not doing it from the goodness of their heart. They're being, they're paid. Um, and that's part of the cost that was in the slide that we, we had that had the one million to two million dollars annually. That includes the city, uh, the labor relations administrator. Um, so, so they're, they're, they're caught, they're paid and come from the city, from the city, uh, funds.
Uh, they are. That's something for us to consider. I guess we as a council need to consider that as well when we're stretching the budget, trying to make things meet. Ooh, that's really something for us to debate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Challenger, for, uh, presenting that information. I think it was very helpful. Uh, we certainly learned a lot through the exchange, and we look forward to the report back, uh, from our city manager and their staff. Uh, and you all working together to bring back that information.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, um, when, when we rece- when we receive the report back, um, I would be interested if, um, the, whoever brings it back, the city manager, Mr. Ch- Attorney Challenger, um, just some history on the, um, management la- uh, labor relation here in Virginia. Just, you know, this whole thing doesn't just pop up out of, um, no context. Uh, there, there's a context. Um, no context, um, there there's a context between management and labor particularly. You know, Virginia and so um I I would just be interested. Cause I I think if we just discuss within just the context of uh unionization and collective bargaining without. Looking at it from a historical standpoint of management and labor. Um, just give us some some context to the discussion.
I have city manager, are you okay with? Context?
I'm okay, definitely.
Thank you very much. So that that concludes our discussion on collective bargaining and I believe. We have now come to city council liaison reports and. Let's start with Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank you, mayor, um, the liaison um information that I have. Um, of course, we all get the information uh from uh the planning commission because um it's on our agenda for tonight. So no need to mention that, uh, but some updates that may not be familiar uh to everyone. Um, are the updates from the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. Um, I am serving right now as the vice chair of the Hampton Roads uh Regional Jail. Um, and that's because the area jurisdictions uh allow for the change for each city to serve as the host. And because Portsmouth was up this year and I was new to the board. Um, we had Hampton to step in and to take our year, which would be this year and then I'll do their year next year. Um, so all of that to say that um there has been lots of information. Um, in the media regarding the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. Uh, specifically right now, the decertification letter that was sent by the Department of Justice. And um the board is working through that, um, they are going to appeal. Um, the letter uh that was sent, it's a lot of information that was in the closed session that. Um, we're not able to discuss um in an open session, um, but uh we could. Go into a closed session and our city attorney could give us um, give more updates uh regarding that. Um, but they are um prepared um to do that, um, they're still working, all of the five. Uh jurisdictions are working uh together right now, one thing that we do know um is that they are looking. Um, to do a reorganization of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, um, right now. City of Portsmouth is not sending any any inmates, um, so they're working through. Uh, a reimagination of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. Where the uh member jurisdictions, the number of people that they would send would be less. Um, but the the money factor didn't change much, um, so you know. Um, I did some quick math and and looked at those numbers and it's still, um, you know, doesn't look like, you know, what. Portsmouth wants um it to look like, um, we do have some ideas on what. We would like to see the Hampton Roads Regional Jail function as uh right now thirty percent of the population is something that they call. Uh, SMI, which is a serious, they are inmates have serious mental um issues. Um, so they have um mental issues that are being handled in a specific way, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail is under. A consent decree to fix some of the issues regarding um the the serious mental uh illness patients. Uh, inmates that are are there, um, and that may require some change on how they house them, on how they. Allow them to have free time um outside of their cell, um, so those are some of the kind of issues um that we're. Uh, addressing there, the meeting's up three hours long, so thank you guys for making me the person to be that meeting. Uh, person, but I am, I'm learning a lot, I am learning a lot about our Hampton Roads Regional Jail and how it impacts um our city, our budget. Um, our inmates who are there, uh, that are coming from the other re- regions, we have no one uh there right now, so um that's something that. Our sheriff uh uh identifies and makes the call on and um as of right now, we're still. Uh, not going to send any inmates there, so if there's some questions specific that someone has, I mean, I can probably answer those. Um, and then, um, okay, we'll go go with that, Dr. Whitaker.
Uh, it's it's um actually, it's a question in regards to the regional jail for the um uh city attorney. Um, when will we be getting a report back in closed session on? Um, the issue we discussed with the Hampton Roads Regional Jail previously?
Doctor Whitaker, are are you speaking about uh recategorizing that jail possibly?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, you know, there's uh the city manager uh has taken the lead in getting the other city managers together. A committee was formed um within the Hampton Roads Regional Jail of all. Five cities, city managers or they're designated to discuss the future of the jail, we're also working with the sheriff and others and. Uh, there's sort of been two plans that have been discussed, uh, one is, is it possible for Portsmouth to take over that jail? And uh lease bids to Hampton and Newport News uh who still need bids, but we, our sheriff would control that jail. Would be the Portsmouth City Jail, uh, North, uh, I'm sorry, yes, Norfolk and Chesapeake have indicated. Uh, they want out of the jail and they are no longer sending prisoners there either, inmates there either. But Hampton and Newport News are still using it and and need those bids, another plan that I've heard floated is that. Uh, the jail could be split where Hampton Roads Regional would retain half of it and Portsmouth, half of it would become Portsmouth Jail. I I don't know if that's something Portsmouth really wants, but at any rate, the city manager will be meeting, is scheduling a meeting with. Uh, the four other city managers of of the uh member jurisdictions to discuss the future of the jail. Uh, one thing that uh did happen besides this committee being import uh convened, which is very important. Is that the uh Department of Corrections has um threatened to take away. Uh, or to decertify the jail, since that time, though, the monitor. Uh, for the Department of Justice, the the federal monitor said, no, we're in control of this and and wrote a letter to the judge. Who's also in control of the federal case, uh, Judge Rebecca Smith of the federal. Eastern District of the Federal Court, she wrote a letter back to DOC, Department of Corrections, Corrections, basically saying. We're in charge here, we're monitoring the jail, you guys sort of back off. Uh, if you read between the lines, so I'm not sure DOJ is going to continue trying to decertify the jail, we'll we'll have to see. Uh, the the hearings have been postponed and we have some time with that, but. Uh, to answer your question, the the city manager is moving forward with hopefully plans that will benefit uh the city of Portsmouth. Uh, with perhaps a a different jail and uh. And and something where we wouldn't be paying, I think the figure right now is four million dollars a year is reduced to four million from six million. For not using any bids, that that needs to stop and so uh as soon as they meet, we'll have some more direction.
Okay, yeah, I I was um interested in it in uh in regards to our conversation. As we look towards developing the waterfront and the opportunity that the regional jail may provide with that. So that that's the, that was the report back that I thought we were going to get later to see, you know, strategically. Um, if that would be something feasible for Portsmouth to do.
It, you know, a lot depends on the bonds that have to be paid down, there's thirty million dollars of bonds on that.
Yeah, that's what I said, that's the report back.
I would think it's still a few weeks away, uh, but but uh they're working on it.
Yeah, okay.
All working on it, it's an exciting thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, we uh initiated um. Plans to back out of the contract through all litigations.
Um, Ms. Councilman Battle, the um, in order to change the agreement, it has to be a unanimous decision by. Uh, the five member jurisdictions, so if three of us want to back out of the agreement and the other two do not, we still can't move forward. So it has to be a unanimous decision in order to change the that contract.
Thank you. Well, thank you, once, thank you once again, uh, Councilwoman for that, that in-depth report and. Uh, so we'll start with our next liaison report, uh, Councilmember Moody?
Uh, no- nothing to report, uh, mayor.
Okay, um, Councilmember Woodard.
Uh, thank you, mayor, yeah, um, um, the liaison, well, I'm the liaison of the planning commission as well, like. Uh, Councilwoman Burke said, uh, pretty much everything we would de- discuss will be um on the agenda tonight, so um. Uh, I'll leave that for us to discuss later.
Thank you, sir. Co- Councilmember Battle, sir?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was out of town and wasn't able to attend, um. I was out of town on city business, thank you.
Thank you, sir, Vice Mayor Barnes?
Um, well, a couple of things, um, Pops and Red, they meet tomorrow, um, but they did discuss the. The bike ride, the lifetime bike ride that you and um Councilwoman Lucas Burke participated in. Um, other than that, also the school system, they um talked about, um, well, they sent us a letter, but they also. Um, voted on their budget in which they approved, um, they're very thankful of the council for fully funding education. Um, but aside for that, that's all I have to report tonight, sir.
Counsel, uh, Dr. Whitaker, sir?
Uh, yes, in regards to what Vice Mayor Barnes um mentioned in regards to the our school board. Funding, as we know, we fully funded the schools and in our meeting with them prior to our vote, we. Had mentioned to them that that would occur, um, Vice Mayor Barnes and our part of the minority contracting, um, we met. Uh, with the city attorney, uh, inner city attorney Stromberg and attorney Miller. And what you see before you tonight, um, to be voted on, the um twenty-one dash one twenty-nine. Uh, change in the city code, uh, there twelve dash one, section twelve dash one seventy-six and the new section two dash one sixty-eight. Um, I would like before we vote, if the city attorney uh tonight could give the citizens. Um, some insight as to um what we are voting on, particularly. Uh, the language that has been added uh to the code, both both sections. In regards to a compelling government interest, um, I think what we're doing here is significant. And is um groundbreaking in a way for localities and I would like for them to explain. Um, that to the citizens and the ramifications so that they can see um the work that we're doing. Um, we're very serious uh about making sure that we correct these disparities in our city. And tho- those are the only two issues.
And and um, Mr. Attorney Stromberg, are you prepared to do that when that item comes up?
Sure, uh, I can do it now or would you rather?
Whitaker wanted to done when the item came up, sir, was that correct?
It is in a public meeting.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, so when when the item comes up before council, if you would, I I will call on you to just make your comments. Um, in in reference to what Dr. Whitaker had requested.
Sure, be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes the liaison reports and we've come to a need for a closed meeting. Uh, to discuss our boards and appointments and I believe either Vice Mayor or Dr. Whitaker, you have?
I I I just want to ask you, Mr. Mayor, um, if no one, if everyone has seen the report and there are no questions. There wouldn't be a need for a closed session if everyone's fine with the report, if not, if they think we need to discuss it, then we can go into close.
Well, did, I I guess then the question would 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 be to ask, have every, has everyone seen? The list um on the boards and commissions and reviewed it? Can we get a show of hands? Cause I see people nodding and. Okay, then, well, um, if 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 everyone then is okay with what has been submitted, um. Then I think we move forward with asking for the motion and. Second and then calling the roll, or what do we do on that?
We're gonna take a break until this seven o'clock meeting.
Okay, very good.
Can I bring up one thing?
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, um, sent out an email regarding the timetable for moving forward with the revision of the anti-interference. Uh, charter section and uh we're on a timetable to go ahead and advertise that and uh. It it appeared from the last meeting or meeting before that the consensus was, was to convert it from a criminal penalty. Uh, for interfering with the city manager's employees to uh a civil penalty of a hundred dollars. And a up to a hundred dollars and a cens- censure by other council people and take it out of the criminal context. Is that the consensus, can we go ahead and move forward and publicize that?
Yes.
Can we get a show of hands if that's the consensus of council, please?
Great, we want to, we want to stay on that timeline, although we have ample time, but we, you know, we we try to stick to the schedule.
Thank you, Attorney Stromberg and Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, right, while we're speaking of that too, I sent an email um out to council. Um, asking that we consider changing the language as well in the city code as it relates to uh recall. That it be uh part of our code, that it mirror to the best extent, the state. Um, the the recall language in our city code is, I think, uh, very vague and it's arbitrary. And we have seen it used in a, in an abusive way. Uh, because it really doesn't have any standards to it, um, when you look at the language that's in the state code. Um, in order for there to be recalled, there there are certain steps and incidences that must occur. And I would like to see if we could, if it is the wish of council that we could also consider. That language being changed in our city code and presented as part of the legislative package. Along with the anti-interference section.
We we looked into that, uh, Dr. Whitaker, as you had asked, and uh there there's. Quite a bit of difference between the two uh ways to recall somebody, our city code. Uh, requires thirty percent of the electors of the city voting for the, in the last governor's election to sign a petition. And it is somewhat open-ended, uh, it's based really on on the petitions and and a vote that's held with the uh. You know, with the residents of Portsmouth, if we went to the state system or what the state allows, we wouldn't even have to put that in our charter, you could. City council could recommend rescission of, it's twelve point oh nine, the recall of elected officials, rescind it just. And and be on the same timetable as the uh revision of the other charter section we're looking at. Um, it doesn't really have to be replaced because state law would automatically come into effect. Now with state law, though, uh, the calculation on how many petition, how many signatures you need is a little different. But it's not a big deal, uh, the biggest thing about going with the state system is though. That you uh turn it over to the Commonwealth's Attorney and a judge actually rules on it. Uh, uh, on the uh whether somebody should be recalled and there's specific. Uh, criteria set out for when you, as as Dr. Whitaker had mentioned, when you could recall somebody. Uh, quickly, most of them are if you violate some law, but the first listed under twenty-four point two dash two thirty-three of the state code says. Uh, a judge, uh, and I think you can even get a jury on this if I'm not mistaken, but um. For neglect of duty, misuse of office or incompetence in the performance of duties. When that neglect of duty, misuse of office or incompetence in the performance of duties. Has a material adverse effect upon the conduct of the office, that's the sort of the general one under state code and then the rest of the. Provisions, it's usually being convicted of some type of crime, uh, will get, uh. You recalled or 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 actually removed from office by a judge, uh, so there's quite a bit of difference. Uh, I don't know if y'all want to think about that, talk. Uh, I don't know if y'all want to think about that, talk about it more, have us provide any more information to you about it. Uh, but again, the the rescission process would be the same as we're doing right now with the anti-interference uh charter provision.
Right, well, um, the the timeline for when the public hearing, I don't have that in front of me, what what date would that public hearing be?
We're hoping for the the uh the um anti-interference uh section, uh that it would be the second June meeting, June twenty-second.
Okay.
Is what we hoping, and and we actually have a little more time i- if we had to push it off a little bit.
But but what you're saying is that for what is to be achieved, it doesn't need to go through that process, it just just rescind the um charter section, is that what you were saying?
No, you still have to go through the state to rescind a charter section, so.
Right.
Yeah, it'd be the same procedure, uh whether we could meet this time schedule that we have for the other revision we want, the anti-interference provision is questionable. But uh there is probably just enough time to get it to our state uh delegation, legislative delegation, to take uh to the state legislature if city council wants to do that. But I I guess there needs to be some discussion and and.
I I think I'm I think I'm not understanding what um the getting, do we need to have both of these presented if we want to do it uh through our um legis- as part of our legislative package?
Yes, both would have to go to the with, as part of our legislative package.
So so I I wasn't following when you when you were saying we didn't have time, we may not have time to do it, that's why I wasn't.
But it as long as, we would have time, as long as council discusses it and instructs us to move forward. I don't know how quickly council uh could do that, but i- if you all instructed us, you know, within a uh the next meeting, I I I or two, I think we could get it through.
Right, well, that that's what I I I thought at our next meeting, you would present us information on this and then we could uh make a decision.
Okay, I i- if that's the will, if y'all want it on the agenda.
Send that, if you could send this, send that to us before the next meeting so we can look over it and then have it to discuss.
Okay. And and.
And 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 to add to, and and to add to that, if you would, Attorney Stromberg, on the recall matter, I think it's important that we we understand what both of those options mean, uh whether it's the citizens, the elected doing the recall, or if it is the option of turning it over to the courts and a- as in what you explained, um putting it in the hands of 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 the legal system or going through the elected. So I think we all need to understand what the implications of each of those would be for for our own edification and for the citizens to understand exactly what that means.
We'll we'll get a memo out to everybody, and then if uh it's the choice of council to put it on the agenda, uh we'll we'll move forward with it. But I'll I'll get a memo out to you all before the next meeting.
Yeah, Attorney Stromberg?
Yes, sir.
Either way, the citizens have to gather enough signatures.
That's correct.
The question, the question becomes, um, once those signatures are gathered, is it just simply now that they're certified, that now it goes up for a vote? Or is it that there has to be grounds that are met and a third-party judge would decide?
Exactly, that that's the difference in a nutshell.
Yeah.
Okay, that's correct. But we'll 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 put it in writing so everybody can see it, you can read the statutes. I I think you're familiar with them, Dr. Whitaker, but for everybody else, uh you can read it. It, again, one is in the hands of the voters, the other puts it in the hands of the Commonwealth's Attorney and a judge, basically.
Thank, thank you, sir, and co- Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Well, I don't think that we should ever put it in the hand of a judge when it's the people's business, and I think that they should conduct it. And the little shortcut of giving it to a one-dimensional judge, you then uh carry the whole consent of the public is kind of, you know, uh, kind of is where we uh don't need to be. Again, it's the people's business, they should make this decision, they're big enough to, and I think that's what we should say. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Battle.
Yeah.
You have the floor.
I just, I just want to say that the main issue with what we have presently is that there's no criteria. The state has criteria, uh just coming up with some reason emotional to recall someone, it it should be some standards that are met, and and that's what the state code provides standards. The cit- it's not taking it out of the hands of the citizens at all, uh because they have to still gather the signatures, but there ought to be some standard that even merits they recall that should um be uniform, shouldn't just be based on whether someone feels a certain way, but it should be some concrete uniform methodology for doing it and criteria. So that's that's what I'm, that's what I'm coming from with that.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
It's not a standard that I would have a problem with, and that's not what I was saying. What I am saying that this should stay in the people's hands, they get the signatures, they do the voting for the recall. The standards, that's that's another thing. What I'm saying, the decision-making and the execution should uh remain with the public. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And so I believe that concludes the discussion and that concludes our work session. Uh, we are now adjourned into our seven o'clock meeting.